All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly is absent. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
And she is remote. Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Grineal?
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Andrew McGuire, town attorney, is remote present.
Hello, Andrew.
Hello.
And hello, Annie.
Hello.
Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. We have a presentation update regarding the 9/11 memorial project, and it says Chuck Wynn, but are you doing it? Okay, Mr. Holt's gonna do it.
I'll do it for him.
All right.
I just wanted to let everybody know where we are on the memorial right now. I gave you each a letter that kind of explains things and tells you and the last few hurdles we have to accomplish. Right now, where we've gotten is all of the vegetation that was surrounding the memorial, all the old tumbleweeds, all that, it's all gone. The three storyboards, one on each of the attacks, have been installed there in there. New curbs and walkway have been installed. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
New ground cover has been somewhat installed. We need to do a little more leveling on it. And we're gonna be putting in a retaining wall around it because we found out when we're putting the ground cover in, if we don't have a retaining wall, all we're gonna do is wash all that ground cover away. And it's not cheap to have them keep hauling that stuff in. So where we're at right now is we're ready to lay the first set of pavers in, and we've actually exceeded what we need in paver, so we're gonna start running the pavers out to each of the individual storyboards next. And if we ever fill all those up, we're gonna go around the whole darn thing with pavers, but that'll be way down the future. The big bump we have right now is the acquisition and installation of the flag poles. We're going with 140 mile-per-hour rated poles, aluminum with the internal howards so that the rope won't get rotted out with our wonderful weather around. We actually have raised enough money to purchase them. What we haven't raised enough for is to pay for somebody to put them in. So I don't know what we're gonna do on that one just yet. I'm not an engineer. They have to be engineered to withstand the wind out there as far as the concrete works. So we're working on that still. We have the 9/11, 20th, I call it, you call it an anniversary. I don't think it's much of an anniversary to be proud of, but the memorial for the 20th year will be this year on the 11th, which falls a week after the town's 50th celebration. So we need to work on that and figure out what exactly is gonna happen there and go forward. Financially, to date, we've raised $11,203 through cash donations and brick sales. Of that, $43,6679 was spent on pavers, retaining wall, stone, ground cover in the storyboards, and we have an existing balance of $6,800 and some change. That's enough to pay for the three flag poles. So I want to recognize the following businesses who have been very generous in donating goods and services to us. Arizona Ace General, Home Depot Prescott, Jack Miller Enterprises, again, thank you, sir, American Concrete Sales, Cooper Excavation and Septic, Hebrews One Seven Ministries, and Tom's Print Shop. So we are where we are right now, and we will have a workday coming up in about two weeks to finish as much of the paver work and the retaining wall as we can get done there. We were thinking we were gonna have to fence it all, put a bunch of no parking signs up because we kept having problems with the ground cover around it being destroyed, but I think once we get that retaining wall in, that may stop it. If it doesn't, then we'll come up with something stronger. But it's not a project that's gonna die on 9/11. It's gonna keep going in perpetuity. Hopefully, as we'll just keep adding to it, making it nicer. Any questions? You guys all have my phone number, my email, everything else. Feel free to get ahold of me.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I have a touch of follow-up with that. Elizabeth has raised enough money for the plaque, and we've been in touch with the gentleman who's gonna be doing the casting. We have a mock-up for it, and it's all ready. As soon as we get closer to it, we're gonna be setting that all up, and we've already taken care of all of that.
Good.
Ma'am, can I get you to state your name, please?
Suzanne Vickery. I'm the mother of the girl raising the money for the plaque.
Okay, next item, presentation regarding Professional Clerks Week, May 2nd through May 8th. It says you heard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here to promote the intriguing world of the clerk's office. Next week kicks off the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week hosted by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So in light of that, I thought I'd shine some, some light on what our office does, right? So why a town clerk? Well, it's the law. Law also requires that each city or town have two other appointed officers, which are a town marshal and a town engineer. Town marshal or chief of police, as we call it. So what does a town clerk do? Well, this question kind of varies from location to location, but Arizona law does require three main functions of the town clerk or city clerk. We serve the council and its appointed bodies, we administer elections, and we maintain public records. We follow federal and state law in addition to local ordinances, and must know, understand, and operate under these laws. So this year is our Mission Possible, the statement you can actually find on our town website as well. We accurately record the actions and proceedings of the town council, maintain and preserve the town's official records, conduct fair and impartial town elections, and serve internal and external customers with big-town efficiency and small-town friendliness. Find a record, any record. So the clerk's office is actually the official custodian of records. We must manage records, no matter the format, which includes emails, databases, audio, video, even social media. A little fun fact, last year in 2020, the clerk's office processed 108 public records requests. So the clerk's role, this is actually a quote written by political scientist professor William Bennett Monroe in one of the first textbooks on municipal administrations back in 1923. Quote, "No other office in municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Its work is not spectacular, but it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. The public does not realize how many loose ends of city administration this office pulls together." And then you can see myself as well as my deputy town clerk picture for Tracy. This here was a little video, I guess you can call, that the League of Arizona Cities and Towns put together, so I'll just let you watch this here. With that, I would ask the mayor and council to officially proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the town of Chino Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, are we supposed to act on that now? Okay. Next call is called Public.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Individuals who wish to speak, please state your first and last name, and if you reside in Chino Valley town limits.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone for call to public? Yes, sir. Mr. Romley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Ron Romley. I live in Apple Lisa Meadows. I know that most people that come in front of you during the call to the public have something to complain about, but not in this case. First off, I want to thank the council for putting all the CARES Act money into the roads where the money is really needed. Secondly, I want to talk about the slurry seal project that is ongoing currently. I want to thank the Public Works Director, Mr. Frank Mulberry, and his staff for all the information that was provided to the homeowners prior to the start of the project. Every home was mailed at least two flyers, which was indicated as to the date they would be working in your area, as well as the time of the day. There was also a couple of people hanging door hangers walking around the day before to remind the people. We did stop and talk with one of them for quite a while, and they were very, very knowledgeable about what was gonna happen. I spent 42 years of my professional life managing road construction projects, and this was one of the best organized projects I have ever been associated with. I know that a lot of planning was done upfront. The contractor started on the day they said they would and the time they said they were gonna start. We were only inconvenienced for about four hours while the slurry seal on our street cured. The contractor broke up the placement of the slurry seal so the residents could park their car, be accessible to their house, if they needed to go someplace while their street was closed. I know that the project is still ongoing in other parts of Chino, but I just wanted to compliment the council, the staff, and the Public Works Department for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for call to public? Okay, here and done. We'll close that and move on to current events and summaries reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report on current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. I have a couple of things here. Number one, Chloe's Kelly is recovering from surgery. We put him in his prayer, in our prayer, excuse me. Councilwoman Perkins is also under the weather. She's here via Zoom, so if you mention her. To the rest of the council, there's been discussion on taking a summer break. We're cutting meetings down so that if we wanted to take a break to go do something with our families, that we could. So put that in the back of your minds, and we'll discuss that more to later date. And also, the executive session tonight has been canceled. Any other council members have anything?
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A few items tonight. First, I'd just like to announce that on Friday, May 7th, and Saturday, May 8th, the town of Chino Valley will be having a cleanup day, and that will be offered free to our residents. Anyone who would like further details on that can visit our website at chinoaz.net. Also, the town of Chino Valley's clerk's office is accepting applications to fill vacancies on its council-appointed boards and committees. Again, anyone interested should visit chinoaz.net for more information, and we encourage everyone who would like to play a part in your local government to apply for those boards and committees. And finally, Mr. Mayor and council, the town of Chino Valley would like to take a moment to recognize Beth Vickery for her achievement in winning the 2020 Arizona Miss Amazing Teen Pageant. Making this achievement even more impressive is the fact that Beth navigates significant challenges, including autism, and most recently, a traumatic brain injury after she and her family were hit by a drunk driver in 2017. Beth was previously the Arizona Miss Amazing pre-teen in 2014 and Arizona Miss Amazing junior teen in 2016. Beth has been an active participant in our community, including helping to collect food for the local food shelter, raising money for the plaque on Chino Valley's 9/11 memorial, and running a summer program for kids at the library. All of this in addition to her regular academic duties at Prescott High School with the additional responsibilities of the Air Force JROTC and S Club. We are proud to have Beth represent the town of Chino Valley and all of Arizona at the Miss Amazing National Pageant this summer in Nashville, Tennessee. You'll join me in congratulating her.
Oh, okay. Well, she's not prepared to speak tonight, but congratulations. We're so proud of you.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on, consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Not here.
All right.
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A, B, C, D, E, and F as written.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can we make sure we get Councilmember Perkins?
Oh, I'm sorry, Annie. I forgot about you, girl.
That's okay. Aye, yes.
Okay. I won't let that happen again until next time. Okay, action items. The council may vote to recess public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, and no action may be taken in executive session. Item 6A, consideration of possible action to award construction contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Road Two North paving improvement project in the amount of $792,888.88, Mr. Marbury.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On April 13th, the town opened bids for the Road Two North reconstruction project. This project will consist of the reconstruction of the pavement section of Road Two North from Highway 89 easterly through the entrance to Country West Mobile Home Park, or Manufactured Home Park, I'm not, Country West, right across from the car wash, mainly just pavement restoration there with a little bit of concrete work. The engineer's estimate was approximately $789,000. We received six bids. The low bid came from Asphalt Paving and Supply in the amount of $792,888.88. They must like AIDS. The amount is within the anticipated $1.1 million budget for the remaining 2021 roadwork. This project, we expect to start probably in early June, depending on organizing traffic control and phasing, and staff recommends awarding this project to APNS.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Any questions? Next item?
No question. Nope.
Okay, so I make a motion to award a construction contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Road Two North paving improvements project in the amount of $792,888.88.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Annie?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, I'm going to recluse myself on.
Okay, so we'll move on to item 6B, consideration of possible action to adopt ordinance 2021-898 to rezone approximately 8.56 acres of real property from the AR5 agricultural residential five-acre minimum to SR1 single-family residential one-acre minimum in order to further subdivide the property. It's not will.
It is not will. He sends his apologies. He had a family emergency he had to attend to. Vice Mayor?
So we have Josh.
So you now have Josh. I apologize for that. So Vice Mayor, members of the council, tonight before you is the John Ginn rezone of approximately 8.9 acres. The property is located on the southeast corner of Center Street and Road One East. The general plan shows this site is designated as medium-density residential, which allows for anything less than two acres. So the proposal to rezone it to SR1 is consistent with the general plan. Surrounding zoning of the property, you have AR5 to the north, to the south. You have SR2 and SR1 to the southeast. SR 0.16 with Chino Meadows to the northeast, and you have Highlands Ranch further to the northeast, which is zoned MR1, MHP4, PAD. You have the commercial corridor to the west. Across the street to the northwest, you have the high school. There is some multifamily as well on the southern side of Center Street. And if I can go back to the general plan, you'll notice that the general plan shows that everything west of, on the west side of Road One East is designated as multifamily commercial. So the property, as I just said, has a general plan designation of multifamily, multi-density, medium-density residential. And the medium-density residential, the defining characteristic of that in our general plan is that any development is less than two acres in size. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they met on March 2nd, 2021, and they forwarded a recommendation of approval to the town councils with a vote of 7-0. The town council met on March 23rd. The item was requested by the applicant to be continued until tonight. So we, after the, and the request for the change in time and the continuation was based on the stipulations that were added to the staff report. After further review of our subdivision regulations and discussion with the town attorney, we made modifications to those stipulations based on what is in our town code and the unique situation with Center Street that's currently, with its current construction, power lines down the center of the street and the pavement all the way to the southern side of the road, which is the northern border of John Ginn's property. So we removed the stipulations that required paving and curb gutter sidewalk on the south side of Center Street. Sidewalk curb gutter will be required on the north side at a future date based on the multifamily commercial designation and future potential for commercial to the west. And because the high school already has sidewalks, the sidewalks on the north side of Center Street would line up with that. Further, we removed the curb gutter sidewalk requirement on Road One East as our subdivision regulations grant the zoning administrator the ability to waive sidewalks on one side of the road. And since the west side of Road One East is designated for multifamily and commercial, we've felt that the sidewalk curb and gutter should be on that side of the road. The general stipulations, those requiring dedication of right-of-way and infrastructure improvements on Road One East would occur at time of development. In the stipulations, I did not write the statement in there that says that we would require the cash-in lieu at time of rezoning. I'm not sure how that got in there. However, any stipulation that we add in the rezoning, this is the time to ask for those exactions. The town attorney, I've asked him to speak a little bit about stipulation number three and what the council can and cannot, can do with regard to that stipulation of requiring the infrastructure on Road One East in the future. Cash-in lieu is an option, but again, all dedications of right-of-way and all improvements to roadways would occur at time of development, not at the time of the rezoning. The rezoning is the time where the town places those stipulations to put the public on notice as to what would be required in the future when the property is sold. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from AR5 to SR1 in accordance with the stipulations in your staff, in your staff report, with the exception of that one statement that required the cash-in lieu at time of rezoning. It would be at time of future development. So the summary of those, stipulation number one was to require the lots that are created in the future to connect to the sewer, which is already in Center Street. Two would be the dedication of right-of-way to occur at time of development or earlier based on what the applicant would like to do. Basically, 15th Street on Center Street at the location that has not been dedicated, so it's at the corner, and then 15 feet along Road One East. It's important to point out that the existing home there is within that 15 feet, and so that's why we would push the dedication of that off until either, A, they pull a building permit for a new house on that property, because at that point, we would require the new house to be pushed back to the required setback. And so it would no longer be a non-conforming issue, or would, at the time of a, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, or we would require either for a town-initiated project. Sorry. So any lot that's created on Center Street that's part of a subdivision, and this is for stipulation number four, would be required to have a non-vehicular access easement, a one-foot non-vehicular access easement, and this is to limit the number of driveways that would occur on Center Street. And again, that is for a subdivision if they choose to subdivide that property. If you have questions or would like to discuss, I'm...
I don't have any questions. I'd like to hear from attorney on the things that he, that Josh brought up, so.
Okay.
Are we ready for that?
Yeah, if Andrew wants to speak a little bit about the exactions and when, what we can require and what the council can do with that stipulation tonight.
Okay. Could you fill us in on that, Andrew, please?
Mayor, members of council, happy to do so. The, if you recall, the reason why we put the stipulations on at time of zoning is more of a heads-up to the people coming next. Generally, that's where we've had the most issues in the past, is when someone was unaware of zoning stipulations or things that were, that were required of them under our code but not actually set forth in the ordinance. And so despite the few errors that we're finding in the ordinance that we need to fix, this is intended to kind of tell the full story, to have the council see in all of the recitals what variations were already granted appropriately under the code, and then to have the rest of the stipulations be as they are required in the code, understanding that the council has the ability to, at the time that later development happens, we can come back to those like we've done in some of the cases fairly recently where we've had the ability to see what the current circumstances are, and then the council has modified the stipulations at that point. We recommend doing that rather than removing stipulations at the time of rezoning just because the current circumstances are what they are, but may not be what happens when there's actual development on the property. And we want to make sure everybody's aware of what the code requires of them at the time of development. Be happy to answer any other questions you have.
I'm good with that.
So the question before us now is strictly about the rezoning. We are not discussing anything about what's gonna happen in the future, about what he does with it or what he wants to do with it, or whether he sells it to somebody else or anything. It's strictly just changing the zoning.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? Annie, do you have anything?
I do. Is the applicant in the room?
I do. Is the applicant, um, in the room?
Uh, yes, I was gonna go there next.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from the council, uh, I'll open up, uh, public comment at this point.
I'm John Ginn, the owner of the property. Thank you for your time, counsel, and that. Yeah, I've had several meetings with Will and Josh, and we've been working on these. I guess the only stipulation that's still is a little hard for me is stipulation number three to, that if the current, um, well, they're renters, but they want to buy that first lot, uh, on east one, on Road One East. Uh, they're wanting to purchase three acres along with that house there. And, uh, if they do want to build a new house, stipulation three says that they'd have to put in fourteen and a half foot of additional pavement without parking and/or the fourteen thousand dollars in lieu, um, of that. And I guess that's the only thing that kind of concerns me right now at this point, since I'm only gonna split the lot, uh, the property three times. I'll have a three-acre parcel, and then probably two, two-and-a-half acre parcels, uh, out of this. And so that was just, that one is a little bit hard to, you know, go to my renters and say, oh, if you decide to build a new house, it's gonna cost you fourteen thousand dollars or fourteen and a half foot of pavement along One East, along with the dedication of the, of the property. Thank you.
Annie, did you have anything further?
Um, my question was, um, along the lines of, uh, I don't have the number in front of me, but it was, or town-initiated pro- um, project. Josh, could you expand on that for us, please?
So if there's a town-initiated project prior to them, uh, requesting a building permit to build a new home, at which point, we would set the new home back out of that, uh, that right-of-way, uh, the town may at that time be required to purchase that home in order to get the right-of-way, uh, built to where it needs to be. So a town-initiated project would most likely solve that issue as we would most likely have to purchase that home.
Did that satisfy you, Annie?
Uh, yeah, that was, that was great. Uh, my concern was with, um, Mr. Ginn or the future homeowner have to re- um, dedicate those fifteen feet if the town initiated a project for Road One East.
If the town initiates a project on Road One East, then we would go in and require the dedication of the right-of-way at that time, and that would most likely preclude us also purchasing the home from the whoever owns it at that time. Either- But, yeah, let the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, and probably the best way to describe it is that you've got a dedication requirement at the time that the town initiates the, the program to widen that road, but you've got the practical problem that if the property owner hasn't yet decided to build a different home and move the current one, uh, the town would then get a dedication of the, the right-of-way, the property, but would have to buy the house, and it would become a, a total take. You'd have to take whatever portion of it was on that lot at that point, uh, because you can't just take a portion of it. You have a severance damage that makes the house unusable, unusable. So even though there's a requirement for the dedication of the right-of-way, it's, it's kind of an impractical, it's name, it's impossibility, frankly, to build the road without having the house as well. So I think it is still a requirement to dedicate the right-of-way, but there would be a step two that actually involved the home, and that's, you know, well off into the future and after the, the town initiates a project, which I'm not aware of anything.
Is that in writing?
Uh, the stipulations, I believe, are worded that way.
Mayor and other council members, is it written that the town would be required to purchase the home if they were to initiate a project to widen the road?
I don't believe that it's written, Annie, but that would be, um, it's, it's a given. You, they can't, the road could not be widened and leave the home there. It's not realistic, so that is what would prompt the town to have to make that move.
Thank you.
Okay. No other public comment? No further council comment? I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight ninety-eight to rezone approximately eight point five six acres of real property from the AR five to SR one in order to further subdivide the property with the stipulations recommended by staff.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor, one quick clarification on that before the vote is that in stipulation three in the ordinance, the, um, it says paid upon rezoning approval. That needs to be clarified that it's paid upon, um, the time of dedication rather than, uh, or paid upon the time that there's a, a project in lieu of, uh, rather than rezoning approval. So we have, number three really should parallel what's in two above it, that either paid upon the time at the issuance of a building permit, or when the town initiates a road project. That's what number three is supposed to do.
I think I have another question now. It's, why are we going to SR one-six when he's gonna leave them at two and a half, two and a half, and three?
The applicant indicated to us that he would like SR one, uh, which is his right to request, regardless of how many times he splits it, that doesn't preclude future owners from splitting it further, which is why the stipulations are what they are.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to amend that motion just to include that?
So Town Clerk, you, you understood what, um, the attorney said?
I did, um, and I'll defer to Andrew. I believe we probably need you to restate your motion with the amendment in there. Because I believe that you had entertained the motion, and then, um, Councilmember Turner seconded. I think we need an actual motion and then a second.
Okay. Can you make that actual motion? Are you seeing it in front of you what the number three is?
I just want to, yeah, the number three I've got. I just want to find the, uh, portion of the paid in lieu of, and it was actually-
The last part of paragraph three A on page one forty, it looks like, my honor.
Okay, so, all right, yeah, I think it, it's, it's under the Road One East portion. Paid rezoning upon approval, which it will not be paid on approval, it'll be paid on construction. Correct? Okay. All right. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight ninety-eight to rezone approximately eight point five six acres, six acres of real property from the AR five to SR one in order to further subdivide the property with the stipulations recommended by staff, and also amend what is written that the paid rezoning, instead of upon approval, would be upon construction.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Mayor Miller, you're welcome back. That'll be a long item also. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
That was that I'd entertain one.
Oh, okay, okay. Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Good night, everyone.